For one, we are the way.
We're taking that important tonight.
Yes.
Your recording is going to be bad. Okay. Uh, like this, uh, this may, I will put together.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are, we are on YouTube, but we haven't started recording yet.
Be a summary of your numbers. I was gonna email you today. Oh, you better know. Right now, okay. Well, she, she gave the report, so. Okay. But if you want to be.
I don't have it at the moment, Maria.
On my mind. Cause I'll forget. And I'll forget too, I'll tell you, yeah, I'll send it, I'll go home with people. Email with people. I didn't email them.
They're not presenting, it's, uh, so they will be part of the public giving testimony.
Oh.
So they would have three minutes, like anybody would have, three minutes. So I have six thirty now, I'm gonna start the webinar, but we can't start the meeting, cause we don't have a quorum yet. Good stuff, and how you doing, John? Yeah, those are sad. Yeah, totally understand. Yeah, but again, uh, then I might give them some pitch, there's three minutes, yeah.
Yeah, I did, Karen added gender graphic setup, yeah? I would love to say thank all of these guys. And for me.
I, I haven't been.
Let's take some time.
I made notes.
I want, I would love to see. Hi, how are you?
How are you doing? Hey, where you are? Yeah. There you go. Awesome. Why take that?
I'm in the next, next time I just.
I understand. I get confused myself sometimes. Maybe stage. Make me too silent, too. It's only twenty percent, but of the full board, yep.
So ten people.
You need ten. If you want to do this on YouTube, you do not have a quorum yet, so you can't start. Yeah.
That's.
That's not the case. Oh.
These are the two that. Cause he said, we have.
Well, apparently, we should be expecting a hell of a lot more, cause the state has opened up.
Yeah, I called the governor the other day, opens everybody, everybody could fly.
I got a. Email from somebody from cannabis, something or other, a publication, asking, were you swamped with applications? The week after the governor made the announcement, I said, no, actually, we haven't received one since then, but we got two on the same day, the week before.
Yeah. And it's not refundable, we have so well, it's over twenty thousand dollars.
Well.
What is the application for? Uh, dispensaries.
The joke I keep saying is, who would guess that the state that lost money on off-track betting wouldn't be able to, uh, sell weed properly?
You say twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah, the application fee, and not refundable.
And so many of them don't get approved.
Mm-hmm. You know, I have one or two. Completely harmless, and the belly next door could be happier, yeah?
I prefer him to a liquor store.
I can't make that meeting, please. It needs to be a form of the. Do you get to see the.
No, this is the public hearing.
Public hearing, maybe. Did you get to see? Did you get to see the new store, yeah? Yes, it's gorgeous, it is, it's so nice, I was gonna, it's brilliant, it's brilliant, as well.
Right across the street.
It's so nice. Yes, and I went, it wasn't finished, but, and the right side wasn't finished, but the other side, what I saw was, they had a couple of things left to do. Yeah. Little bit of touch, but I went way in the beginning of the school, yeah, two days before school was. They're not putting it toward the school now, like, then? No. Oh, it's a public school, but it's, because the one on thirty, the one on thirty-six. Yeah, it's a char, I mean, you would never say, you would never say that. Because. There's applications.
Two more, we text people?
Yeah.
I'm gonna show up. Need two more.
I know the city was always. At one time, that's that again.
Anytime.
But if the child.
The room's closed.
I saw that he used the neighbors in school. Exactly. But it's a really pretty open. Yes, yes, um, where they say that. And they go with it and.
Empty for fifty years. Amazing. They were desperate for school space.
Oh. Crazy thing now, that there's such a deep line of numbers.
Yeah, although I, I really wanna get numbers from, uh, uh, DSS or, or, uh, CAU, cause you know, there are a lot of migrants in the community, so I'm wondering if it's having a disproportionate impact on our district. So I'd like to find out, you know, how many kids, migrant kids are in our open schools.
So most probably in PS twenty-four, because they have the dual age program.
That doesn't necessarily mean that they put them in, in a school where they, they have appropriate program.
They try to match them in those programs.
Like, oh.
Well, that's good to know, that's good to know. They tried to do a great job, they do, they got the both of them, the last round, they got the both of them, also they can, no one back to being right, so. One seventy-two doesn't have a two-year program. That'd be a good number to have, John.
It helps us advocate.
Yeah.
Without knowing it.
Although they still, the homeless, the, um, the migrants still being housed in the hotel on thirty-second Street. Yeah. Yeah, that's families. Not single men, no, families. They have families, yeah. The single men that were parked along, there's more are in the park. More single men like this. Just the family are in the mall. And any other, uh, there is another one on. Twenty-ninth Street. In here, also, although being housed on their tour, family, yeah.
So. Perhaps we should talk to him.
Why don't you vote for any?
Uh, there is no rule for voting. So I would say that's up to the chair. So, there are various contingencies, one. Try and set this up for Tuesday. I would not try to set this up for five-thirty before. Board meeting, if this goes too long. Potentially, we could empower. Smaller group. We would just do it without a public hearing, this would require a global board meeting.
Is it in the bylaws that it needs to be public?
That this needs to be a public hearing, I don't think it's in the bylaws, but I think it's a requirement to the city that is particularly. Um, we could potentially do it after the board meeting, and then have a, that would be up to Julio, a, a purchasing board meeting. Um.
Jerseys, um, jerseys as well.
Okay, that would be nine. Oh, I would say. Yeah. Okay. That'd be seven. Now we need two more, very chance.
Label. Second best.
So folks who are enjoying this, you're still waiting to get a quorum, so it's.
Three months?
I have no idea.
Okay.
We, with us, we don't have an eternity limit.
Thank you, it's not where, we, uh, we, the election is the last, it's, yeah.
There's one such thing, uh, I think she's only missed one month, though, I think she was here in June. Yeah. She has a good excuse for our committee if, uh. Then we gotta do it again.
What is?
Right.
Okay, we got Aunt Fana saying she's coming, um, Karen, Jerry. That only was in times, because she had a doctor's appointment. And she said, I won't be home anytime. Um, I, I think I just. Wouldn't be expecting. Oh, Pat, Pat is joining on fire.
He doesn't count as quorum, no.
It doesn't count, yeah, computer has the imperson. Now that that shouldn't have been. Sorry, I think he's received so many complaints. Could not have been. Is it the borough president?
Your, your complaint should go to Kathy Hoco.
Oh, this is wrong.
Yep.
It's, that's, that's ridiculous.
What was releasing anything that happened?
Uh, it's the state's, uh, uh, open meetings law, so there's nothing that allows for, uh, people to not be in a little bit, it's a law that, that, I don't know when it was from, but it doesn't take modern technology into account. It's something that needs to be updated.
You know, any of the ones that brought that back from, you know, the junior, several of them stood up and said, we're gonna bring them back and we'll.
Well, they haven't had a session.
Oh, yeah, it's January, right?
Right. Now, we gotta go through at least January with, uh, in-person meetings, or break the law. Well, I guess I'm not cooking dinner tonight, you have to get it out of you myself.
Well, I'm assuming you would have gotten a quorum.
Well, we would have forty people. Camera's back there, Joe, you have to wave back there.
Your phones and. And mute.
Cause I thought I saw her on mute, and then.
And that was the clearest audio I have.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
Not up to Jerry, but I think, I think that would only be fair for the folks here.
The windows wait till seven, and if they don't show up, sue yourself.
I guess we'll have a conversation in the morning about what we should do. And that's assuming she wants a quorum.
I just figured. I'm back later tomorrow, just get, just get it back, right?
We'll be seeing. For dinner day.
I know that guy, I did have a monster, I'm ready for. Send you all those pictures. He didn't fund that.
Hi, guys, I'm sorry, I'm not there in person, but I did ask, told Julio I had a doctor's appointment, so, sorry.
You wouldn't make quorum anyhow, you'd only do nothing.
Oh, what are you, a short one?
Yeah.
Tell her unfortunately she doesn't count.
I can hear you.
It's the governor's fault.
Yeah, that's why I made.
What's on the screen? It's on, and, and you're most.
I would, uh, if you don't do a quorum, you should tell the folks who joined the, do, they might provide us. Right, but then we would have to have an emergency board meeting, and are we gonna get a quorum there of twenty-five?
Oh, this has to be.
All right, we got nine. I'm sorry? Uh, the end of month. And you were here when we had our seven-hour board meeting, right? The Industry City vote?
Seven hours.
That was a seven-hour board meeting. When we voted on Industry City, we got out to get one of them.
I remember that well.
Yes.
And then prior to that, the week before, we had the eleven-hour land use commitment over two days.
Yep, I remember that too.
Well. I would be open to any of that, uh, again, I don't think the, uh, open meeting police are going to come and arrest us, so, if we don't get a quorum tonight, then. Christina and I will have a discussion with Ruby tomorrow. No, I could best do the, not starting half hour late.
I'm used to that. It happens all the time. All the time.
The audio is not coming in that great, just so you know.
Thank you, I'm so. Yeah, dear. John and I was.
Yeah. Yeah. So there's four Chinese, maybe we can vote around. One in, one in San Francisco, one in, uh, except, yeah, San Francisco. Uh, Boston, New York. So, uh, because. The year again. No, we can't open the meeting. Well, there's a round. Right. Right.
Why?
We can't do official business, uh, outside. Our presentation, that we're not giving. Uh, it's kind of a gray area, so it's not official, we're like, twenty minutes, we won't be in the. We'd have to go through the transit, it's only the transportation, and that is what has enabled us. Well, I, I think this, I think what we're also seeing all year is, and this wasn't the case with work, no, but three meetings, three meetings. But it's all, I mean, tonight, it would be the whole. Yeah, Cynthia has a meeting tomorrow, public safety, about, uh, two, uh, pot dispensers.
I think people will come to that. And everyone should say free samples for all. That's what I, I, I mean, right, free samples. I, I can do what I do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm submitting all your names to the top, which is a venture score.
I have to try it.
Or make sure that they don't sound bad.
Exactly.
I wonder what I, what I do, whether you'll do, but really, I don't get that, whatever money they make, I will give back this money.
It's not a requirement.
Yeah, totally, I guess, a higher tax, I'm, I remember that right?
No.
No. Cause like with the liquor ones, right, they have a higher tax, it's not standard, uh, eighty-seven-five, it's like an extra tax for.
It's funny.
There's a liquor, yeah, there's a liquor tax, I don't think there's, uh.
Funny thing, because no, it's not, but it's, you know.
That's why they have to, all of your pay cash.
Mm-hmm, a lot of them do all cash, basically. You're understanding?
Hey, how come we don't, uh, review, uh? Uh, we could, we have a call-up policy, if you have a business, then, we have three hundred of them, so if you have a problem location, let us know, and the next time their application comes up, we call them up.
Cause normally it's people we know, you know. Only if it's like a problem, it's not, it's just there, and Jeremy always says that announces that the meeting, we got whatever amount of licenses.
Most of them are renewals, and when you talk about liquor licenses, most of them are, you know, corner stores selling beer.
Yeah. Well, I remember one of the precinct offices, captains at one point standing up, saying, I was there, we were talking about home shelters, so, he doesn't, home shelters are close by, it's, no. You know, and they're most often the victims too.
Well, I was, I was gonna bring this up, about, uh, uh, when we were joking about selling weed, but, uh, I forget the comedian, I always loved this joke. Five guys who are drinking start a fight, five guys smoking pot start a band.
How long do you give a job?
I have six fifty eight now. And I'm making an announcement to the people there and try something else. It's unfair to all of you, it's unfair to all of you, you've been sitting here for a half hour, you're gonna get help my half hour later.
Sorry. Are you reading my line? All right, it's seven.
See you tomorrow. Listen, how, how, how quick, try to sample. That's the best, that's done.
No, I'm still here.
Oh, that's weird, because you're not appearing in.
We saw it, we saw it, you like.
I've been here, so that's it?
That's it.
Good night, everyone.
Quorum tonight, we're gonna end this session, our old morning, we're gonna figure out how we're gonna proceed.
Okey dokey, good night all, good night.
Night.